Good evening, London.
Sorry, King. There you go. Smile up. Please introduce the new minister for the, sorry, Lindisfarne Anglican Church, the Reverend Christopher Codic, and he will open the meeting with a prayer. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for all your goodness, your loving kindness to us and to all people. We thank you for this world that you have made and the blessings we all enjoy. We pray that we may never take for granted the gift of life we have and the fact that we can live it in such a beautiful place as the city of Clarence. Lord God, we pray that you would grant to our governments and all who serve in public life wisdom and skill, imagination and energy. Lord, would you protect them from corruption and the temptation of self-serving and help us all to commit ourselves to the common good, that our community may be a secure home for all its peoples? Lord God, you are the ruler of the nations, and we pray for this, our Clarence City Council, for its members and officers. Please direct their work, influence their decisions for the advancement of your glory and for the safety and welfare of this country and this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice may be established among us. We pray you would continue to make Clarence a diverse community that works together, that we would be a vibrant, prosperous and sustainable city, and that all decisions tonight might enable that vision. We ask all this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal community, the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet on today, and pay respect to their elders past and present, and remind members of the public and that this council meeting is being recorded and the closed meeting is not. Thank you. We have apologies from the mayor, Alderman Chipman, Alderman Hearn and Alderman Dowstens. Item two, confirmation of the minutes of the meeting on 14th of August, Alderman Chong, Alderman Peers. I'll put that motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried. Mayor's Communications, I don't have anything to report. Item four, council workshops. So, thanks Alderman Peers. Motion, all those in favour? Declare the motion carried unanimously. Item five, declarations of interest. Item six, item petitions. Are you extracting there, there have been no petitions? Thank you. Evans? Public question time, 7.1. Item nil, 7.2 nil. Item 7.3, answers to previous questions on taken on notice of nil. Item 7.4, questions without notice. Questions without notice. Item eight, yeah, well, well. Thank you. One big break.
Item three, Cambridge Road, BelRee. It was announced in the March newsletter, the four community hubs would be Wiston Vale, Tremorn, Rokeby and BelRee. As it has now been announced, the four hubs will be Wiston Vale, Lindisfarne, Rokeby and Tremorn. Can I ask whose decision was it to drop BelRee and insert Lindisfarne? Why was it done? And when will the BelRee residents be advised after signing?
I'll make my decision in person.
Sachi Yasuta, Melana Road, Lindisfarne. Given the community backlash to councils handling of Shandrod Petrochemicals development application, would Clarence consider following the lead of other councils and not advertise development applications over the Christmas, New Year holiday period?
Thank you. Once again, I'll take that question on notice. What's going on? Nothing further. Take that. Item nine, motions on notice, there are nil. Item... Mr Acting Mayor, there's been no petitions? No, thank you. So, item nine, there are no notice on motion. Item 10, reports from outside bodies, item 10.1, from single and joint authorities, the Southern Council's authority. We're waiting on the, on the report. On the Copping Refuge Disposal Authority, Joint Authority, the Fitcham Chair, we had our quarterly meeting last Thursday, and the minutes will be circulated at the next council meeting. Thanks. Tas Water, there's no report. 10.2, reports from council and other special committees of council and other representative bodies. Alderman James.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. I'd like to, first of all, table the minutes of the Clarence City Council Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, minutes of the 8th of June 2017, and also the minutes of the advised Tracks and Trails Advisory Committee, minutes of the 17th of August 2017. And I would, Mr Acting Mayor, like to pose a question through you to Mr Lovell, in his capacity as the city planner. Mr Lovell, in our minutes, at our meeting of the 17th of August, it was discussed, amongst other things, that the Burrell-a-Rigulet track was subject to an appeal by the owner. And in that, it was mentioned that as part of the development application, council has requested a strip of land along the Burrell-a-Rigulet for a walking track, waiting for the outcome, of the final outcome from the tribunal. Could Mr Lovell, through you, Mr Acting Mayor, just bring us up to date with the outcome of the tri- or the tribunal's decision and where council may go from there, please?
We've seen, we've seen the position for the tribunal, which goes to the church house position. We're still...
Thank you. I'll only table those minutes, Mr Acting Mayor. Thanks, Alderman James. Alderman Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will centre the acting corporate secretary, the July minutes of the Harrow Community Centre, the Richmond Advisory Committee, and also the May minutes of the Community Health and Wellbeing Committee.
Any further reports, Alderman Thirley?
Mr Deputy Mayor, I will also forward the BelRee Community Arts minutes for August. Thank you. And the August 19 minutes.
Thank you. No further reports? Thank you. Item 11, 11.1, the weekly briefing reports of the 14th and the 21st of August have been circulated. Alderman Thirley? Alderman Von Verdoe? Yes, Alderman James?
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. I refer council to the weekly briefing report of the 14th of August 2017, and in fact to page four, Lorda Dile June Building at Canal. In that, it refers to, amongst other things, about progress on that. But my question through you to Mr Graham, in his capacity as group manager, asset management. Mr Graham, given that there has been substantial work done in relation to the sandbagging and also closure of the sand dunes for people to obviously access or use their, use that access to the beach with their kayaks and boats, et cetera, is it possible for council to undo that decision, given that it was one of a number of recommendations of the TCAP inquiry, and none of those other than that recommendation of TCAP has been followed through? So, my question is, is it possible for council to be able to decide that it should not proceed and therefore undo what works have been done to date?
Thank you, Mr Graham. I agree, Acting Mayor, yes, it would be possible for council to do that. Alderman Farland?
Following question to that same issue. Considering it was a high priority under that report, looking at safety issues for the whole of Lorda Dile, is it correct that I read that there is a possibility of putting in a slipway for smaller boats to go over the dune? So, they can still use that area to launch small dinghies and planes?
Further on the weekly briefing reports, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.2, determination of petitions tabled at previous meetings, there are nil. Item 11... Item 11.3, planning authority matters in accordance with the Regulation 25, the council now sit as a planning authority in accordance with the Act of 1973. Thanks, Mr Lovell. Item 11.31, a development application at Seven Mile Beach, alteration additions to a dwelling. Alderman Kusick? Alderman Chong? Alderman Kessick?
Needs to be an appropriate, appropriate development application in which council score.
Big support for the office's report.
Further speakers? Write a reply. If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.32, a development application at 218 Crossus Road, Richmond, part of 326 Crossus Road, a development. Thank you. Alderman Peers and Alderman McFarland. Alderman Peers?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think it's pretty straightforward. I've read all the acceptable solutions in this, and I can't see why we shouldn't approve this.
Thank you. Alderman McFarland? Any further speakers? If not, write a reply. No, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.33, a development application at 171 Tranmere Road, a one-lot subdivision and two multi-dwellings, one existing, one new. Alderman James? Seconded, Alderman Thirley?
I, I think this is covered quite well in the actual reading on page 59, even though it says it does not comply, then on the, you know, of course, we go to the performance criteria and proposed lot adjoining the deck would form a new vacant lot. Shadow diagrams have been submitted with the application demonstrating that the most significant shading effect would occur at 9 on the 21st whereby 85% of lot would be in shadow as a result of the dwelling located. However, the shadow diagram demonstrates that from 10am onwards, the, it would receive full sun until 3pm. Seek council support.
Thank you, Alderman Thirley.
Just to say, Deputy Mayor, that this development actually sits well and consistent within others in the area.
Further speakers? If not, write a reply. Alderman James? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried. Item 11.34, a development application at 44 Travisus Crescent, Tranmere, access over lot 42 and 46, the dwelling. Alderman Kusick? Walker? Alderman Kusick?
This is a nip and size lot, over 1,000 square metres, and I think all representation issues have been adequately answered by all of the council offices.
Walker? Any further speakers? If not, write a reply. If not, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.35, a development application at 31 Bastick Street, Rosney, two multiple dwellings. Alderman Walker? Alderman Peers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, interesting contours on this site. I draw people's attention to the lot size in a brave new world of 325 metre minimum lot sizes, it seems positively ample.
Thank you. Alderman Peers?
Look, I went and had a look at the site, and I think it's quite appropriate for this development.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Alderman James?
The question to start with, through you to Mr Lovell. Mr Lovell, the acceptable solutions in relation to the private outdoor space, the comment on page 116 is directly accessible, let me just say, private open space is directly accessible from an adjacent to a habitable room other than a bedroom. This does not comply, as the private open space allocated to unit one would not comply in clause, and that it would not be directly accessible from the adjacent to a habitable room other than the bedroom. And in the performance criteria, it goes into some detail, perhaps Mr Lovell could clarify that for me in relation to the acceptable solution, saying that it would not be directly accessible from an adjacent to a habitable room. So, how do you actually get there and how do you actually allow the open space, utilise open space?
In fact, it's a proof, it's a, it's almost technicality, you know, it comes off a door from the dining room, down some steps to the, to the open space at the back, and the reason why it's from a narrow corridor, you've got the floor plan for attachment for unit one, there's a, there's a kind of a, was it covered beside, beside the door, which means it's actually coming out through a gressing passage, like a metre and a half long or something. It's almost a, you're right on this point. But I can take you to unit one floor plan. You see the dining room. You see the doorway in the corner of the dining room, there's some stairs in front of it. That's the access to the open space, which is the rear.
So, on that basis, then, it... So, it doesn't matter, Mr Lovell, regard of the extent to which you access open space, as long as it is in a look and cranny or it is some little corridor or some approach to that, that would allow, under the performance criteria, to say there is access to public open space other than to, other than a bedroom. Is that, is that what you're saying?
I said, there's a stand in which allows direct access to the rooms. But where the room narrows before the door, such as this does, just because there's a cut next door to the door, that means the performance criteria is called up. But the view that we took was any real terms, it doesn't really alter the accessibility of the dining room.
Thank you. Any further speakers? If not, Alderman Walker, write a reply. Thank you. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried. Move to item 11.4, customer service items, there are nil. Item 11.5, asset management. Item 11.51 is the Waverly Flora Park Avenue of Honour.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. This recommendation is, well, still has a long way to go, there's no doubt about that, but at least council is taking the initiative to undertake a community consultation on the concept landscape plan for Waverly Flora Park Quarry Road entrance and Avenue of Honour. Concept plan is outlined in the port. Initially, when this was discussed at our Friday briefing, I, I thought that, that we were really jumping the gun here by putting out a concept plan which has far-reaching ramifications and in fact, sort of clocks up the dollars in a sense because of the car park, the playground equipment, et cetera, where what we are really about here is, is the Avenue of Honour. But I suppose inasmuch as that this will be part of the community consultation, it will be the overall concept. So, I suppose in a sense that by enabling us to go out to community consultation, we are probably obtaining an overview of you and hopefully not losing what we really want to do with this, and that is to have an avenue of trees to, to mark a special event. So, having said that, I'm not speaking against the motion, but I'm just hoping that, that when it does go out to consultation, that it may, the covering letter, Mr Acting Mayor, may sort of preface this question of the Avenue of Honour, rather than speaking in glowing terms and what we can expect in stages one, two or three, which is really what the, this is sort of like a master plan in essence. So, having said that, I'll seek council support, and I'm hopeful that we don't get lost in the wilderness here and find that there's all sorts of comments that come back to us about whether there should be the car parking provision on one side of the avenue or the playground equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So, let's hope that the community consultation will achieve what was always our objective, and that was to understand and have the Avenue of Honour done in the shortest possible time.
Yeah, I support this, this recommendation. We did have, we did have an opportunity, we had the triple watch to visit the site. Only the mayor and myself saw, saw this opportunity, along with Mr Graham and some others, and looking at the site, and then the first lot, the pitch in Attachment One, which shows the path, which is there, of course, and the trees that are up there, it seems to be a very logical way to approach it, and it is a work stage, as I said, it's stage one of five years, stage two of 10-year plan, with the first stage being the pathway to Avenue of Honour with the trees, and I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Any further speakers? Alderman Von Verdoe?
Yes, I also attended the site when we actually visited it, and I think it was very worthwhile actually going out there to see the possibility in relation to such a facility. I think it's really important that we actually look ahead, and that is what we are starting to do with a lot of our plans. And yes, it is a concept plan, and that's where we need to start, and therefore, I think it is very valid that we actually look at the whole area and then, as part of it, look at the Avenue of Honour, which we would like to be the first stage, and hopefully we can actually have that completed by the requisite time. But certainly, that area is ripe for some sort of park, such as that we are looking at, obviously, to complement the natural Waverly Flora Park. Thank you.
Further speakers? If not, Alderman James, write a reply. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against, declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 11.52, Seven Mile Beach Sporting Precinct Master Plan. Alderman Thirley? Alderman Peers? Alderman Thirley?
Deputy Mayor, this is, again, an example, as Alderman Von Verdoe has alluded to, of planning, of looking ahead and meeting demand, and I've always had a vision for Clarence to be a sporting mecca of pro-barde in general. This is an example of a project that will really, really establish Clarence in that area. Now, we have an example of Blumston Arena set in the confines of BelRee's community. This is an example of a piece of land that is just going to be embrace of all of, that's needed, and it's multifunctional, it's AFL standard, it's got a sporting precinct, I think this is going to be stadium yard. Federal funding's required, obviously, to attract, to get this project underway, and it's great foresight on behalf of asset management to get this rolling.
Yes. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Look, we know this was built today, this would probably be very well used now, we know a lot of our sporting ovals are at capacity, which is fantastic, especially the growth of women's sport. So, to undertake community consultation at Seven Mile Beach in this master plan sporting precinct, I think is certainly the way to go. As Alderman Thirley said, it would certainly need federal government funding, there's no risk on that, and it probably is a long, long project, but at the moment, we could certainly do with the extra sporting facilities in place.
Further speakers? Alderman Walker?
Yes, I will be supporting this, Mr Deputy Mayor. I would note, as some of the comments in the workshop, I, I think we need to nuance around its title. Seven Mile Beach Sporting Precinct makes it sound like a localised thing. This is very much a regional asset that we are hoping to develop as such. I hope, as it evolves, again, that it might begin in a different moniker, be it the South East Regional Sporting Precinct, whatever, but narrowing it down with that title is a little bit misrepresenting what it's about. This is a regional standard facility. what it's about, this is a regional, uh, standard facility that we're starting along the track right at the beginning of a bit of a journey.
Alderman Thirley.
Uh, again, from a regional perspective, I hope that, um, AFL have been, um, deeply involved in this planning stage, because to a large degree, our concerns were about future ability for both junior and senior games, and also at a federal level having larger crowd facilities, so, for me, I know that they have been looking at their own strategic planning, and I'd like to know if anybody knows, if they've actually done their side of the strategic planning, or Clarence.
Uh, no, I prefer to present it as their side.
Well, I think we should chase them up on that, because that has been something we've discussed for a couple of years now.
Further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman Thirley.
I, I agree with, um, Alderman Walker as far as making it a regional project, because this is not only going to serve the region of Clarence, but it will serve the whole of southern Tasmania, if not the whole of the state, because if it's of adequate standard, it's going to be highly utilized, and it's going to be a real, um, asset for Clarence to actually have it on its doorstep, so I think it's fantastic that we can actually get this, um, moving, getting, getting the sporting bodies involved, it's already created a collaborative type of approach from, and uniting sporting clubs, and that's a great thing, because we're all in it for the benefit of the community as far as active recreation's concerned, so I, I'd love it to be a unanimous decision around the table that we get, um, public consultation.
Motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried unanimously, item eleven point five three, road closure Barrington Vale restricted access to Stokel Creek statutory consultation. Thanks, Alderman Chong, Alderman McFarland, Alderman Chong.
Uh, thank you, Mr Acting Mayor, um, look, council and to be honest, have invested a great deal of time and effort already into this area, cleaning up a lot of the, the wrecks that were there, and making some efforts to turn it into a, not a dumping ground, but you have one for some time, and it's really great to see this next stage, if you like, by getting, hopefully getting the road access blocked off, so that we can prevent this happening again, and I seek council support.
Alderman Thirley.
Um, I would say that since the wrecks have gone, there actually hasn't been any more, so it's good, somebody's talking to somebody down there, and they have desisted from burning out cars in longer, so that in itself is a great outcome, and I totally support, uh, blocking access to the creek.
Any further speakers? Alderman James.
Yeah, a question through you to Mr Lovell, um, uh, Mr Lovell, um, have you had discussions with the transport people in relation to what council really wants in relation to the actual, um, uh, restricted vehicle access to, uh, Breeden Way, uh, part of Hullfield A- uh, Avenue and Mossman Road, so have you had a, have you done a sort of a, a litmus test in, in a sense as to whether or not, you know, they would be supportive of this, because it all depends on them, does it not?
Uh, through you, um, Acting Mayor, um, we have approached, um, the Transport Commission, um, they did not want to make any comments on it, they didn't want to prejudice their decision awaiting all information, including the community consultation, before they would actually.
Your opinion, you know, will, will they tick the box, and will they basically sign off of this, or is it still up in the air?
Um, true, and we, I, I don't know, I don't know comment for our. Hopefully with all the support that we've had from council and the community, that they would, uh, do this, uh, reinforce our decision.
Do you have any further speakers? If not, write a reply, Alderman Chong, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried unanimously, item eleven, uh, point five four, infrastructure priorities. Alderman McFarland and Alderman Thirley.
Oh, well, once again, we have a really good list that we've been looking at for at least fifteen years now, um, so I'm hopeful that half of these will get done before the next, um, council election, particularly the ramp of, of the Tasman Highway, so I, I endorse the recommendation.
Thirley.
Um, one of the, one of the projects has come off the list, because it's actually going to be progress, which is great, which is the Holliman Avenue Roundabout, so that would have been perhaps top priority for us, but it has been, and it's off the list, and that's fantastic, so if we could see some of these come off, uh, and particularly good time prior to elections to try and get some of these projects really progressed, um, note B that the, um, proposed Seven Mile Beach Sporting Complex is a priority, so that's, uh, something that's in the mix there, and, um, we've discussed our, our priority, this represents what we have discussed around the table, and, um, we hope that it's put forward to the state government.
Further speakers? Alderman James.
Uh, yes, look, um, the decision in relation to the, um, uh, the traditional road transport issues of the city were covered in the, um, at the council meeting of the third of August two thousand and fifteen, and of course, most of those have been included, uh, with the exception of the Tasman Highway Holliman Avenue Roundabout upgrade. Back in two thousand and fifteen, I was, uh, opposed to, uh, the dot point one, uh, because of the nature of consultation that took place prior to that, in relation to council's, uh, desire, uh, to actually widen Gordon's Hill Road, and then of course, uh, provide some parking bays on that road, and upgrade it as part of the, a million dollar at the time, I think, funds that council had for upgrading roads within the city. And there was a very, uh, strong and determined group of people headed by Mr Ralph Bellman and others who were opposed to not only the upgrading of Gordon's Hill Road, but more so regarding the Gordon's Hill Road turntable, if you want to call it that, onto the Tasman Highway. So this has still made its way to the top of the list, together with the, uh, off ramp off the Tasman Highway to the CBD area of Rossney Park. So I will not be supporting this, as I did back in two thousand and nine, and then fifteen, because I don't think it's appropriate, and also too, I don't think it's going to get legs, this thing won't get legs, it, it, it has been, um, discussed, as I understand it, by the working groups within the, uh, priority listing of, uh, roads, which, whichever government of its political persuasion has basically said, no, it will not get up, the council has consistently kept it there, and this is in a priority order, there's no doubt about that, because, uh, it's made its way back up into that top priority listing in two thousand and fifteen, and in discussions, uh, prior to that. The other interesting, uh, projects which a number of us have fought for, and I think a couple of the, the new aldermen to this place have signals that they would be supportive of, and that is, the four lanes from Lindhill Avenue to Clinton Road making signalization of the, of the Gilston, uh, Gilston Bay Road Clinton Road intersection, and that is really a priority as far as, um, Sarkis' development up on the hill overlooking the East Derwent Highway and, and his intention to expand it, so that ought to be, in my view, well up the list, um, and also to the question about, um, uh, the East Derwent Highway four lane extension from Grass Tree Hill and the roundabout to the east side of Bone Bridge, I was on a, a steering committee back in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, when we were looking at this, and we ran into some problems, as the deputy mayor would, would support me on that, and that was in relation to average of mids, et cetera, and that basically put the kibbush on that, but that was back in those early days of the, or late ninety, nineteen nineties, so look, the other one there, which is important, which is well down the, the list, is the South Arm upgrade from the Police Academy Roundabout to Acton Road at Lordedale. Now, the, these projects are well and truly, uh, require urgent attention, and by having them down, as I mentioned, the four lane extension from Lindhill, the actual East Derwent Highway expe- extension, and also to the, um, the South Arm upgrade, South Arm, uh, Highway upgrade, you know, uh, we'll be lucky, we haven't get a tick in the box, uh, for either one, or two, or three of these, and, uh, I will not be supporting the, the recommendation.
Any further speakers? Alderman Piers.
Uh, like Alderman James, uh, I do not totally agree with the order at, at these three, I am going to support it though, because we had a workshop and this was, it was discussed, and that was the order, it came out, I mightn't like what's on top of second or third, but these are to be put forward through local government associations of Tasmania, we have got a state election, it doesn't matter what order, we've got these in, if the state, if the, through the election campaign, if someone wants to fund them, it will be their choice, not ours, so it really doesn't matter what order they go on, so look, this was done at the workshop, this was the order that came out, I mightn't like, and I'm certainly going to support it.
Alderman Kersy.
Hi, for once, kind of agree with Alderman James, um, I think the number one is the East Derwent Highway extension, but I note here, it says Lindhill Avenue, that should be, I think Mr Graham from Gockton Road.
Yes.
Um, I, I think, I mean, that's relatively, from a non-engineer, relatively easy to do, the land's there, I think, uh, the East Derwent Highway four lane extension for Austra Hill is not going to happen, that's like Clarence Melbourne, there are ownership issues of land there, uh, and I think the South Arm upgrade should be a very high priority, um, but I will support it, but I, I think three or four, um, items probably would have been enough.
Alderman Walker.
Yes, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor, some points to note, um, that there's almost certain odds on any betting markets that the Alderman Cusick or Alderman James parties won't win majority government, neither will the Alderman Piers parties, so as such, these orders, oh, I'm a member of the Fabian Society, aren't I?
Order please.
Um, the bottom line is, these are lists that are put out as requests, so they're not about what any of our individuals, um, desires may be, it's a smorgasbord, it's a smorgasbord that we send to the government of one persuasion or the other that'll get in, uh, it won't be the Democrats, I understand, Alderman James, um.
Order, Alderman Walker, please address the subject, thank you.
I'm a member of everything, Alderman James, um, now going on, the, the point of the matter is that this order isn't necessarily what I would particularly choose exactly either, but by having those different options, it can be put to governments and results can occur, and we have had results, we've had great results with the Tasman Highway, absolutely great results, and we've also had good results in small but really meaningful ways, such as the on-ramp for, um, a targo traffic heading towards Gilston Bay, not necessarily big dollars but big things, but here's the deal, you're either voting now to give options, or voting to say, nah, everything's awesome, let's leave it as it is, it's one or the other, that's what the voting record will show, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you.
Uh, look, I absolutely a- agree with Alderman Piers and Alderman Walker, we have to give options, if you look back two years to our previous list, the roundabout at the airport was actually the fifth one on our priority list, it wasn't at the top of the list, but that was the one that at the time was picked up as being the most important, if we don't give a whole slew of options, some of which will be accepted, some of which won't, nothing will get done, all of these are important, they may not be as important to the state government in the order we've got them, they may not be as important for all of us in this order, but they're all important to our municipality and should be left on the list and voted for.
Further speakers? If not, just a, a word of advice on it, what will come into play is the value of the projects and the amount of money that any particular government's got at the time, and on top of that, then they'll play politics with it as well, so it's a wish list, and as many aldermen have pointed out, uh, the order is not necessarily the end of all ends, at least we've put, put it before, for a potential government, these are the priorities and that, and, uh, I think some clearly understand that, thank you. Uh, the right of reply, thank you, um, Alderman McFarland.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor, uh, once again, I don't necessarily like the priorities either, I mean, I'd like the road remain road to get some up, along with, you know, point eight from the Police Academy Roundabout at St Moe at Lordedale, well, I know that's not in the ten year list, however, what we have seen is the development along the highway, and a lot of that has been about easing traffic congestion for the bridge, so I would presume that if I was a state engineer, I'd continue along those lines, and so the first two points would be interesting.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour, those against, declare the motion carried. Uh, item eleven point six, financial management matters that are nil, item eleven point seven, governance, eleven point seven one is the draft cultural history plan, Alderman Chong.
Thank you, Mr Acting Mayor.
Alderman Thirley, Alderman Chong.
Uh, thank you, in, in Alderman dash absence, um, I'd just like to put the recommendation, obviously, that the two thousand and nine plan, which is the one we've been working from since change in the intervening eight years, and it's time for the plan to have a review, there's already been quite extensive internal consultation, we've had two workshops, there's been consultation with staff, there's also been consultation with the history committee and other interested parties, so it's appropriate now, after all of that, if this goes out to community consultation.
Alderman Thirley.
Deputy Mayor, it's wonderful to think that, um, culture and history is, is, um, getting reviewed and looked at and hopefully progressed, because just as important as sport is art and culture, and Clarence needs to progress its culture, its history, it needs to really embrace it, and we've got some opportunities coming forward, perhaps for some, uh, newer venues and opportunities, some really first-class, uh, venues to be able to present the history of this place and actually create some, uh, major interest, so it's wonderful to think that this, um, history plan from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two will keep all our history groups happy, will act, will actually give them a forum on which they can progress their interest.
Thank you, any further speakers? Alderman James.
I'd like to ask a question through Mr Acting Mayor to Alderman Chong, as deputy chair of the Culture Historic, uh, Paris Group, um, Alderman Chong, um, Mr John Sargent's collection, uh, that has been a matter that's been discussed in this place, and also too, we made a decision on it, has the committee made any decision or recommendation in, in the way that we can, um, support Mr Sargent in maintaining his collection on this side of the river, and also to, has the, uh, the group had any discussion about trying to find a permanent home for the collection?
The acting general manager will answer the question, thank you.
I, I'm the one that's asking.
I made a ruling, the acting general manager, thank you.
Through your, through the acting mayor, the council resolved to, um, and as part of the budget process, to allocate five thousand dollars to assist Mr Sargent with the curation of his collection, that offer has been made, Mr Sargent is, has had discussions with council officers, and has yet and has yet to come back to us with an acceptance of that offer and that's where it lies at the moment.
A second question through you to Alderman Chong. Has Mr Sargent raised this matter at all at the meeting?
Oh, heck, I'll give her a break. The chair in the meeting, thank you, does not have to answer the question if she doesn't. Alderman Chong?
Yes, it has been raised and the information has been given by Mr Tui is what's been given at the cultural history meeting.
Thank you. Anything further on the draft cultural history plan? Alderman Chong, write a reply. Okay, now put the motion, all those in favour. Those against declare the motion carried unanimously. Item 12, Alderman's question time, 12.1, questions on notice and nil. 12.2, answers to questions on notice and nil. Item 12.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice, nil. Item 12.4, questions without notice. Alderman James, thanks.
Two questions. Firstly, has council received a DA or is in the process of receiving a DA with regard to the Velried Oval and its proposal to seek some changes to the noise attenuation under their environmental protection notice? That's the first question, please.
Through you, acting mayor, we haven't received that application.
Thank you, Alderman James.
The second one is in relation to, is council about to or is in the process, has had discussions about a revised DA with regard to the Kangaroo Bay Hotel and Tape Training Centre at Kangaroo Bay?
Lovell? Yes? Alderman Walker?
Yes, thank you, Mr Acting Mayor. Probably through you, I suspect, to Mr Graham. Playgrounds are rejuvenated and replenished with equipment fairly periodically. And I'm thinking more in this case of the neighbourhood, such equipment. When that equipment is, as I said, replaced, is that old equipment discarded? Is it offered up to groups? Anyone that may wish to perhaps find a use for it? Are there opportunities for those people to make inquiries with council? Second question through you, I suspect, is to Mr Lovell. I'm wondering if you can refresh my memory in relation to the urban growth boundaries now. I don't necessarily have a high opinion of them and think that it's somewhat of an artefact, not done as an oracle of science and in parts is a bit contradictory. Can you confirm, does the Sorrel municipality, and by that I guess I'm meaning the Sorrel township itself, would that sit within the current urban growth boundary or outside of it?
Lovell?
Right, so I wonder if I can just squeeze a supplementary or shout it down. But it is hypothetically possible that a merged southeastern council may in fact have very defined and constricted growth boundaries in one aspect but may have cart launch expansion in another component.
Through you, Acting Mayor. There's no cart launch outside the urban growth area either. In that there are a whole bunch of other strategies that deal with growth in other centres under the original native strategy. So whilst they may not be having growth down the line, there may be other techniques that exist.
Yes, Alderman Farley?
Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr Graham, as asset management. There's a pathway between, that was washed out, between Little Harrobeach and Harrobeach and council has bollards there and signs but it may be, the signs may well be to try and deter people from walking that way but they are walking that way and the problem is that it's been like that for several months. And the person that raised the issue with me is concerned that I've seen elderly people negotiating this pathway and it has some safety risks.
Colin?
Two questions through you to Mr Graham. When will the work on the green belt in Claretton Vale start? It was budgeted for in the last budget. And secondly, the toilets at the Crummell Park have a number of male and female toilets out of order and what's the timeframe for them to be relocated?
Alderman Chong? Thank you. Alderman Kessick?
Through you to the acting general manager, Mr Ackmadge. It's in relation to about motion consultation. Can you give us some sort of timeframe around when the responses will be, when the closing date for responses is? And then roughly how long it'll take you to collate and review those responses so that the information comes back to council? I mean, in November, I think it's been three years since this all started. It's a bit of a long time to make a decision, so.
Through you, Acting Mayor. The consultation survey and the package associated with it will be issued with the next rates notice. That'll be in about the third week of this month. Council resolved to give a two-month period for consultation, which would bring it to about, round about the 24th of November of this year. When we get the survey back, it should only take us a week to collate those results and analyse them. And then we anticipate the next stage, we'll be reporting back to council initially via a workshop on the results of that survey so it can give some direction as to what the next stage should be.
Hopefully be, you know, within this calendar year, sorry, December.
Yeah, depending on what council resolves.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question, it's just a bit long-winded but I just, the question would reach you, Mr Tui and Mr Wicks. And if I just may go on a bit. I've got an email from Michael and Anne Giedt. And I just like to read this because I'm going to ask you a question after I read this.
Billy should ask the question and then...
Well, the question is, have you received any further information to say that I actually phoned Mr Giedt and offered to meet with him? Because what he's got here, I'm very annoyed about. So that's why I bring it up now. I ask, as this appears from a recent questionnaire I distributed to all councils indicated from the ATO required, yourself, meaning the acting mayor, Alderman Dowskys and Bob Verta did not require. I would assume this could also breach the code of conduct in not answering requests from the public. Now, my question to the three of you, that I phoned Mr Giedt and said I probably have to come to a meeting because I heard they were having a meeting. I phoned Mr Giedt and I said, do you want me to come? He said, no, it's not a public meeting, it's a private meeting, none of that can. So my question is, have you received any correspondence from Mr Giedt in saying those words that I actually phoned him up? I did not ignore them? Have either three of you had any correspondence of that nature? Because I'll tell you, I'm pretty annoyed about this. I'll tell you that now.
Are there any? Mr Wicks?
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yes? There are no further questions so we'll move into closed meeting if I can have the... Thanks, Alderman.